Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with our invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Russ Dyer is here with Southern Ridge Church of Christ. I'll ask him to lead us in the invocation. And afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Gary Morris to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Pastor?
Holy God, our Father, as we endeavor to consider so many opportunities set before us and the wondrous things that you have given us of this world, we pray that we will do so with wisdom that derives itself from the heart of those who see beyond our times and beyond our years, that draws upon a wisdom that can only come from on high. May our aspirations and our dreams be that which benefits not only the present time but looks to the future of our children and our grandchildren. May those who make decisions this day be those who are blessed with insight, with wisdom, and with strength. For, Father, it is our great desire that always we would be a benefit to the humanity there about us and that all things would be appropriate to divine will and to the supreme design that you have set around us and before us. As we look forward, Father, give us courage of our convictions, strength of our wisdom, and determination of our hearts. And it is in Jesus Christ, our dear Lord, we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call the meeting to order and begin with item four on the council agenda. This is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for October 16th, and item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for October 9th. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the Journal? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mr. Mayor, on page 12, under unsecured items, under item 8F1, item E2820 Northwest 16th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item G2038 Northeast 17th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item H2242 Northwest 20th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item M1132 Southwest 44th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item Q800 Northwest 114th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll recess the council meeting convening the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There is one item. Comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA convening the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. And again, there's one item. All right, comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA convening the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There are five items. All right, comments or questions on the EAT?
Your Honor, I have a couple of minor questions. On item A, we're looking at some different kinds of garbage cans, for lack of a better term, and I wonder if we would be advised, well-advised, to maybe buy a sample, put them out in the field for several months, see how they stand up? Because we're getting one with a little bit more, less wind resistance, and I just wonder in Oklahoma if that's a smart move.
That's a great question, Councilman Ryan. Let's see if we can get Marcia or Amy.
No hurry. I just.
Okay. Thank you for that comment.
And on item B, this is one that kind of project always gets my attention. Do we have any metrics set up to measure our success on this particular item? This is dealing with.
Well, it is a part of our annual citizen survey on an annual basis, but we do survey our citizens, and then we do also have our, we do know the set-out rates that's monitored by the contractor.
Okay. So we've got some measurements that we can?
We can measure the, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Marcia, do you want to address the original question? Mr. Ryan asked, since these are new carts, should we start with a few and try them out before we jump in?
Wait, we have tried a few, just a handful. We'll begin with, we'll begin with a few more, a couple of thousand probably, which is a very lot, but in our business, it's about a tenth of 1% of our total, pardon me, 1% of our total customers.
Okay, so we are starting with relatively a few, a couple of thousands?
We do, we do this very cautiously, and we do a lot of testing on the carts for resilience. As you can picture, the carts get squeezed, they get thrust to the ground, so they do those kinds of tests before we consider purchasing them as well.
Good, thank you.
All right. All right, let's vote then on the EAT. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. Are there any individual considerations on the 16 items on the consent docket?
Your Honor, excuse me, Your Honor, item K is a street lighting agreement with Cato Electric Cooperative, and it, I have no problems with what we're doing here, but I do have a question, is, have we reviewed our street lighting policy recently? We have a really minimum number of lights we put in under our policy. Any intersection things?
Are you talking about for new subdivisions?
Yes, well, existing both, really. We need to put some mid-block lighting in from time to time because we have long blocks, particularly in some of the new subdivisions. And I think although lighting may not make people more secure, they feel better with light. And I just wondered if we've reviewed our policy. I know it's an expense item.
Yeah, no, I don't think we have reviewed that in quite some time, Mr. Ryan, so we'd be happy to do that and get with Public Works and Planning and take a look at.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Any other comments from council on the consent docket?
Mayor, I apologize. On AA?
Okay, go ahead, Skip.
I would just want to know if this project, as we will go forth in reference to the gymnasiums for the I-89 schools.
Which item are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were still on the, I'm sorry, that's on the concurrence docket, I apologize.
Okay, yeah, we're not quite there yet. All right, anybody else on the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, now we're on to the concurrence docket. Skip, go ahead and jump right in.
That's what they call us, Skip.
On the gymnasiums that will be part of the Maps for Kids projects, I wanted to know, are all these programs or as far as the facilities, will they be basically a cookie-cut program in reference to the build-out itself? Or will some of the schools get an opportunity to have some individual design as it relates to gymnasium? And the reason why I bring this up is because there are some schools, I think, that would benefit so much more in reference to the development of the gymnasiums if they were more friendly to the community, which means that you could develop the gymnasiums with the build-out where you have some integrated activity for the community use also, which could be meetings or even weekend little league basketball programs. So many of the schools, though, in order to accommodate in reference to that, you have to have someone there manning the school to go from the front door all the way around to the back. And I was just trying to find out if there's a way that we could look at some of the schools on an individual basis to, you know, do the build-out where it would be more friendly usable to the community. And if we're talking about, you know, so much of trying to get the communities more healthy, I think this would be an opportunity, one of the opportunities that we could use before we go out and just do this cookie sheet, you know, build-out.
Councilman, when we did Mass for Kids and we touched every elementary school, whether a remodel, an addition, or a total reconstruction of each school, they planned, even though the money wasn't available at that time, they planned where the gymnasium should go as they did that, even though that wasn't part of the original Mass for Kids projects. And some of the things they looked into was access and making sure, or trying to make sure the best way possible to get access into that gym without maybe being able to isolate the rest of the school. So that's some of the things that they looked at. But generally, we have program requirements, and it's going to call for a certain-sized gym. Now, the architecture and how that ties in will be made unique for each of the schools based upon the layouts of those individual schools, but basically, we're limited in scope to some very specific things laid out in the program requirements.
Right, and as far as the uses, that would be a district decision, and I'd be glad to get with you and work with the district and see if there's any opportunities to do the programs you're talking about.
Your Honor, may I make a comment? Councilman White and I have the opportunity to serve on a joint commission, committee with the Oklahoma City School Board, and one of the things we've talked about extensively is making the schools more user-friendly. They have, the school board has adopted a policy of making the schools available for after-school meetings, for neighborhood associations and things, and there was a lot of talk about the design of the gymnasiums to make them so that people could use them without having to get on the main school property. There was some concern with the school board about the security aspect, a lot of computers and the like in those buildings, people wandering through them, but they realized that the neighborhood schools can be a valuable asset in rebuilding the strength of our neighborhoods. And they've been very willing to keep their playgrounds open and make their schools available for meetings. In fact, they were disappointed they haven't had more response yet, but I think it's going to take some time because they have, over the years, been sort of given a cold shoulder to some of the ideas, but they're much more responsive right now.
Right. All right, thanks very much. Any other comments on the concurrence docket? Thank you. Pass it. Passed unanimously. All right, we're on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a long series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward Three. It's an ABC issue at 6330 Southwest Third Street. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anyone signed up to speak on this?
Yes, sir.
Bob, we've got a little bit of a problem, I think, here on the documentation. If I'm reading right, if you look at the picture, it's in my packet, it shows the intersection of Northwest 122nd and North May.
Excuse me, it looks like we put the wrong aerial with that staff report.
That doesn't, that doesn't.
Doesn't affect the legality or anything. No.
Okay. I am move, Pat, I'm not trying to move into your ward, okay? I move for approval.
All right, comments or questions then on item 8A1? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to 8A2. It's also an ABC issue. This one's in Ward Seven at 1920 Northeast Eighth Street. And Skip just walked out. Why don't we come back to it? We'll come back and, let's move on to item 8A3. The address is 4407 South Robinson. It's currently a planned unit development. It would become a C3 community commercial district, and it's in Ward Four. Pete?
Yes, I met with the representative of the applicant, and he has agreed, the applicant has agreed to change the application from C3 to C2, which takes out some of the more noxious uses, and I think they're in agreement with that. Is that right, Mr. Box? I would like to, I suspect I need to move that. I'd like to move to amend the application from C3 to C2.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any comments or questions on the amendment? All right, cast your votes. The amendment passed unanimously.
And then I'd like to move approval of the, of the application as a C2 application.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
I also like to express my appreciation in working with the applicant and their attorney on this matter because it was, it was very simple, just the way it ought to be, very, very well done.
Good to know. All right, let's move on to item 8A4. It's a zoning case in Ward Two at 3016 West Wilshire Boulevard. It's currently an R1 single-family residential district, and it would become an R2 medium-low-density residential district. Ed?
This is to permit construction of a duplex. Does anybody sign up to speak? There's no protesters. I move for approval.
Cast your votes on item 8A4. Passed unanimously. Item 8A5 is in Ward Three at 605 North Tulsa Avenue. It's RMH-2 Mobile Home Park District, and it would become an I2 moderate industrial district and amended to an I1 light industrial district. Larry?
Yes, has anybody signed up on this?
No.
There were no protests at the, at the planning commission. They unanimously approved it with the amendment to make it I1, so I would move for approval, amending it to an I1.
All right, cast your votes on item 8A5. Passed unanimously. Item 8A6 is in Ward Seven, so we'll hold that one back. Let's move on to item 8A7, which is in Ward Three at 8225 Southwest 15th Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential and a scenic river overlay district, and it would become a new planned unit development. Larry?
Yes, this also was unanimously approved by the planning commission. Has anybody signed up on this? I would move for approval.
All right, comments or questions here on item 8A7? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A8 is in Ward Seven, so let's come back to that. Item 8A9 is in Ward One at 8100 West Hefner Road. It's a planned unit development, and it would become a new pud. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. Applicant here? Yes, could you come forward for just a second, please? I know at the planning commission, there was some discussion from the neighborhood over concerns on connecting the street back into the existing neighborhood to the south by the school. Do you recall any conversations along that line?
We discussed it, and because it was built to a collector width, it's 32 feet wide, we will be making the connection, and it was discussed, and then they were okay with it.
Okay. There was also some talk about, and not in this plat, but in the future, connecting that road back out to Council Road from, from the south end of your plat here. Is that still being on the drawing board? Or do you own the property between this addition and Council?
No, we do not. We are proposing a stub street at the end of our property so that it will continue to Council at some point in time, but we do not own that property.
But as it's planted now and as you plan to do, you're going to connect the street up into the existing Harvest Hills neighborhood? Is that correct?
Yes.
Bob, is that the way planning understood the final result to be on it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then the road will be extended to Council when that property develops.
When that property develops? Okay. Has anybody else signed up to speak on this? Okay, I'll move approval. Give a second. Cast your votes. Let's go on to get item 8A10. This is in Ward Seven. We, you've got several. We waited for you to get back, but we're on item 8A10 right now. You want to go ahead and do that one? This is the one at 5220 East Wilshire Boulevard.
Is there anyone, I believe, is the applicant here?
We have a couple of people that have signed up to speak. I don't know if they're the applicant or not.
I represent the applicant, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You represent someone that is opposing this project?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can he come on up now?
Sure.
Yes.
Come on up.
Are you Kirby?
I am Kirby.
Yeah, we'll need your name and address for the record.
My name is Kirby Evans. My address is P.O. Box 2323, Oklahoma City, 73101. I'm an attorney-at-law in the state of Oklahoma. I represent Mr. Curtis Watson, who owns adjoining property, and he is vehemently objecting because the property is designated as agriculture, and they want to put in, basically, while the, better name of it is the studio, it's really going to be a glorified welding shop. The big problem with that is, one, they want to put the building right next to my client's property instead of, he had, the applicant has, I believe, three or more acres he could place it well away from there if he, that were really going to be his intent. There's going to be storage of flammable and hazardous material. It's going to look like a junkyard, scrap iron. There's going to be chemicals going into the groundwater, which Mr. Watson drinks out of, a lot of noise, more, more like a nuisance type of stuff with the vibration noise, odors and everything coming out. He's very concerned about the drain off, the rain drain and storm runoff onto his property. And at the end of the day, when the property was bought by the applicant, he knew well what the property he was buying and what it was zoned for. Mr. Watson, I've known since I was a young child and worked with my, he worked with my brother as a stonemason, has worked hard all his life, all these years, and that was his retirement place, and now he looking to have, that it's going to be, you know, everything's going to be torn up, and he's not, and understandably, any one of y'all two would not be very happy. I don't think it's an appropriate use of the property. I think it's going to create a lot of problems for the neighbors, including my guy, and therefore, we lodge our objection. And there is some question, and I was just hired real recently, and I haven't had a chance to investigate it, whether some people on the planning commission that approved this first time also sat with the applicant on another type of planning commission, and they should, may not, maybe have recused themselves on voting. I don't know that to be true or untrue. I haven't had the time to investigate that. That's my comments for the day.
How long? The, the individual, the resident that you represent, how long has he lived?
He's lived there a long time. I don't know exactly, but probably more than 10 years.
How big is the lot?
The lot they have, I think, is over three acres, and they're wanting to put the, put the building right next to my client's property when there's plenty of other room.
And does your client have a house on this property?
He does have a house, and he's lived there for a long time.
How did the planning commission look at this and staff? Can you summarize the?
The planning staff recommended that it was in conformance of the comprehensive plan because this, it's actually just under two acres, but they felt that the scale of the proposal, the fact that they agreed to no outside storage of materials, wouldn't have a negative impact on the rural character in this area.
Okay.
At some point, he'll want to add a, a house at this property.
And did it pass unanimously at planning?
Yes.
Okay. Skip, what do you want to do?
You know, one of the things that always bothers me when, when we're talking about these type of projects and you have landowners who have, have been anchored for a substantial period of time, and then we put the stipulation that there will be no outside storage, knowing good and well that nobody's going to go out there and enforce that if, in fact, the owner calls and says, well, they are storing items outside. I just think that is one of the weakest stipulations to justify a approval of some of these projects when, when we know that we're not going to be out there enforcing it, and.
Bob, do we enforce those things if, if drawn to our attention?
Yes, we do. The property, all the surrounding property is zone double-A, and so, I mean, it lends itself to having some outdoor equipment.
Exactly.
Those types of things, but for his use that he proposes, and he said it at the planning commission meeting, you know, the material that he uses wouldn't be stored outside because it's too valuable. If they stored it outside, somebody would probably steal it. But we do enforce that if we get a complaint.
So what is the material that he's going to be using? Or is it he?
It's different types of metal. He's, he does metal artwork.
The applicant is a sculptor.
Yeah.
And creates large.
Sculpture or welder, it's a welding shop that makes fancier stuff that sits outside. I mean, the artistic value should not be determinative, especially against a client like mine who's been, you know, I mean, he's a hardscrabble guy that's made a hard living and should not be weighed against the, the quality of local artist. I don't think that's even fair, and I can't imagine you guys would make a decision on that.
But on the other side.
But to say that all his, all this guy's trash is going to stay inside, and my client is going to have to call you guys up every time the trash gets outside is, I don't find that credible, and I wish you would advocate for the, for the poor guy instead of just the guys that you like.
Well, is there, is the sculpture, is there a studio presently in existence?
There's nothing there.
He's going to, he's going to build the, the building.
Okay.
And it will be on the west side of the property, but it has to meet the double-A setbacks, which is 25-foot minimum.
It's going to be, it's going to be next to the guy's, my client's house.
There's a site plan that shows the trees that are going to stay on the property.
Is this a business that's being relocated to this area that's already in existence someplace else?
I think that it's a new studio, but I'm not sure if he's got an actual business somewhere. I know he does the work, but I don't know if he's doing it out of his house or what he's doing.
He bought the property knowing what it was.
Yeah, how far from the house? How far from his actual house is it going to be? You say a 25-foot setback, is that from the property lot?
That's barely for me to use.
In double-A, yes. 25-foot's the minimum required. I can't read the distance on the site plan. It's got to be a minimum 25. There's not, there's not a provision in the rezoning that sets an additional setback for the building, so.
Is there, is there someone else that's signed up to, to speak on this project? Or is it just?
I don't see the applicant.
Is the applicant here?
He's not here. He has, he has to work. I'm here.
So you're, you're representing the protester, the one protester who had one protester?
We had one protester.
Oh, I'm sorry, I get it.
There was one protester at planning commission, and we have one letter.
Is the applicant here for this item?
Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Not that I'm aware of.
Apparently not. We probably ought to do something. Skip, what would you like to do?
I would just like to defer this for just a short period of time to have an opportunity to speak with the representatives or the, the one protester and the applicant, just to try to see if we can.
We don't, we don't mind meeting with you and with the applicant.
Yeah.
In fairness there.
You know, I, I think this can be worked out, but I would just like to have an opportunity.
I don't blame you.
Okay.
There's some trouble here. All right, how about a motion to defer then, Skip?
Two weeks.
Can we, can we get a little more time? I had a bad motorcycle accident. I've got to go have some work done. I apologize. Maybe four weeks?
You know, I don't want to go too far out because the applicant is not here to, there's not a representative for the applicant, so I don't want to.
As a lawyer, I'd like to count her at three.
We'll continue for three weeks.
All right. Do we have a second on the motion to defer? Cast your votes. That item is deferred for three weeks. Thank you for coming down.
Give me a date.
Let's go ahead and do item 8A11, and then we'll go back, Skip, and pick up items 8A2, 6, and 8. Item 8, 8A11 is in Ward Eight. Pat, it's at 14624 North May Avenue.
Yes, sir, and I see the, the owner's representative is here, David Box, and if we have questions, we can get David to come up and answer it. However, this is a relatively benign application. They want to build a pet cemetery behind a funeral home, and the only question that occurred to me is, and I didn't get this earlier, I apologize for that, is the freestanding sign part. Certainly, a pet hot.
Pet burying ground.
But not need a freestanding sign.
Good afternoon, or good morning. David Box, 522 Call Cord Drive. What the application is for is a pet crematory, so there won't be any burying there, but what the sign is for, as you know, the front on May is where the Smith-Curky Funeral Home is. So the freestanding sign is nothing more than an identification sign so that when patrons come into the site, they know that when they get to that back building, that that's not the building they need to go to. So it's an accessory sign, it won't be visible for May, and it's just so that when someone comes onto the property, if they make it to the back building, they know that the back building's for the pets, and they're in the wrong place if they're looking for the other portion.
And a monument sign wouldn't answer that?
Monument sign was fine, yes, sir.
Monument sign is what you would put in?
I'm sorry?
You would put in a monument sign at that point, David?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, in that, I have no objections. Has anybody signed up to speak on this one?
No.
There were no objections at the protester at the planning section. I move approval.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
All right, let's back up now. Item 8A2, Skip, is a ABC case in Ward Seven at 1920 Northeast Eighth Street. Has anybody signed up, Francis?
No.
Nobody's signed up.
Oh, they're passing up 8A2.
Well, we do have someone that signed up. You want to go ahead and have her talk, Skip?
Yes.
Okay. Come on up. We will need your name and address for the record. You probably ought to pull the mic down.
Okay. Hi, my name is Janofia Lewis. I live in Ward 2, but my business is located in Ward 7. And what I'm trying to do, this is a retirement project. I worked 30 years for the Federal Aviation Administration. I retired, and I've been working on this project for eight years. And I just got it completed. I'm trying to bring a quality of fine dining or quality dining down there in that neighborhood. And I have acquired that with the landscape and the building and the food. And what I want to do is extend that quality of, of dining to serve beer and wine if approved. And I, I wish that everybody would approve it. And I wish that everybody would come because it's really a nice place. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thanks for coming down.
You know, um, one of, one of the problems that I have, and I've, I've received several calls in reference to this as it relates to the location of two schools within the area of, of the restaurant that is asking for the overlay. Douglas High School is directly across the street. And approximately two and a half blocks to the east is Edwards Elementary School. I'm, I'm very much aware of our zoning issues as it relates to, uh, you know, restaurants and the ABC overlay. But the individuals that have called has expressed a great concern as it relates to the percentage of food that either has been or will be the main sale of, of the restaurant. And at this point in time, of course, when I talked to the, the planning commission, their response was is that, you know, if they are selling a percentage of food, then that shouldn't be a problem. But on the other hand, has the restaurant been in existence for how long to show what the sales of the food has been? Do you, is there any information of that?
I, I tell you. I opened July 30th. The July 30th and 31st, I sold $489 in food. For the month of August, I sold $5,986.40 in food. And when the fair came, my profits dropped to $3,800. And I'm back on track. My lunch crowd left because of the fair, because everybody goes to the fair and eat. And when I went to Benny Keith, my food supplier, they said everybody's business suffered during the fair, the two weeks of the fair. And this place, the children don't come over there. This is the way I have it dressed and the way that I designed the place. I don't want children. Children don't come over there. It's not a bar. It's not a grill. You cannot, I don't have a regular bar where you have bar stools. What I have, if you want to order an alcoholic beverage, you have to order an appetizer or entree. You cannot come in my restaurant and sit and drink and drink and drink. It's not that type of establishment. I, I will not condone that, basically because of the location. You have Martin Luther King and you have 8th Street. There's a lot of transit people walking up and down those two streets. I don't want people to come in, get drunk, and get belligerent and destroy what I've worked hard for. And it's not a bar. It says restaurant. It's defined restaurant. And that's all it is. There's no bar stools. If you want to come in there, I seat 45 people. You cannot, there's no place for the bar, for bar stools, period. It's just a nice upscale dining in that part of the neighborhood. And all of y'all, I mean, it's really nice. You need to come, and the food is excellent.
Okay.
I want y'all to come get some of that catfish fried chicken.
What is the, why, why students can't come into the restaurant?
Well, because they think it's old. It's for old folks. And so they back when they get out of school. And it's besides, it's a closed campus. When they get out of school, they walk across the parking lot and keep walking. They never stop by. The teachers come over there and eat, but the students, I guess, the way it's designed, I even have a to-go window, but nobody comes to the to-go, to-go window. They come inside the restaurant. And I guess when they, when it first opened and school had started, they would come in and get a cup of water. And they would look at the decor and I guess the music, old-school music and not the rap. I guess it was too old for them. So they, they're not interested in coming or participating in.
What is the rule, Bob, as it relates to the distance from, from the schools?
When, uh, you have mixed beverage, there's no restriction if the mixed beverage sale isn't the primary use of the, of the property. So in this case, as long as they maintain more food sales than they do mixed beverage sales, then they'll be in compliance with the code, and there's no setback requirement. Now, one, one advantage we have, we could respond as a zoning complaint if they, if we get a complaint that they're selling more mixed beverage. But also, the ABLE Commission will look at this one, and they would respond as well since she's selling this mixed beverages. So there's...
So are there any hours of operation as it relates to when the beverages can be sold as it relates to the distance of the schools?
And, no, there, there's a restriction of 2:00, but it doesn't relate to the distance of the school, from the school.
You said 2:00 what?
2:00 AM. They can, ABC 2, if it's, if it's beer and wine, they can sell up till midnight. ABC 2 or 3 can sell up till 2:00 AM.
So this is beer and wine?
No, this is an ABC 2, so they, they could be open till 2:00 and serve mixed beverages by ordinance.
Bob, what was the vote at planning commission?
It was unanimous.
Okay.
It was what?
Unanimous.
It was unanimous.
All right. I'll move it.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Your Honor, I apologize. May I back up for a sec on A11 and ask for the emergency?
You sure can.
I move the emergency.
We have a motion on the emergency on item 8A11, um, which was the item at 146th and North May. Do we have a second? Cast your votes. The emergency passes on item 8A11.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Apologize again.
Skip, we're on item 8A6 now. This is in Ward 7 at 4 Northeast 70th Street. It's currently R1, single-family residential, and it would become an I1 light industrial district.
Amen.
Does anyone sign up? No one's signed up on this one.
Is the, um, is the applicant here or representative for the applicant? I think this is one we have...
Mayor, members of council, Dennis Fox, and path the applicant, Jeff Van Hoos is in the back of the room, and Tim Johnson is here as his engineer. This is a case where we went to the planning commission, and in dealing with the staff and the planning commission, they asked that we move our property line to the north of a floodway and thereby keeping the floodway intact and all the trees. And so we took out three acres, this application. It is to rezone at I1, which is consistent with all the uses surrounding it. And we have had no protest and no problems with any of the residents.
Yes. I would recommend that we move this.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A8 is in Ward 7 at 1400 East Hefner Road. It's a planned unit development and would become a new pud. Skip?
The applicant here on this, this is, um...
I'm Roland Tagg. My address is 100 North Broadway. I'm actually representing Greyhound. The applicant is the property owner.
No, this, this is a different one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. We're on 8A8. This is on East Hefner Road.
Mayor and council, Ernie Ish, representing the applicant.
And I, I received a note from Mr. Ish. And I haven't received any or had any calls from anyone objecting or protesting to this matter. So this is a matter that is already, we've already approved it. The dog kennel is, is, is it up now?
No. The previous, the existing zoning is a PUD for a dog kennel. That never happened. My client purchased the property to move his operation. Grooms Irrigation is a landscaping and irrigation business serving commercial and residential customers. And they're going to locate their office on the frontage road, have a shop for maintenance of their equipment behind. And then back behind that, they'll have a plant, storage, and growing area where they'll have hoop houses. They bring trees and other plants in and grow plants there that they use in their business. There's no retail operations that would be, would happen at, at this location. We worked with the neighbors to the northeast and, uh, agreed to some screening. And as I said, the office building is what is on the front that faces onto Hefner Road. And so the neighbors were happy, and we had no protest.
All right.
So at the planning commission, did y'all enter into, to a stipulation as in reference to the screening?
Yes.
Or was that something that y'all have just...
Yes.
...said it's, who's done at the planning commission? Is that right?
Yes.
Is that part of the TNA as far as...
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Recommend that we move it.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Roland, we're now on item 8B. This is in Ward 7 and has to do with the idea of moving the Greyhound bus station.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I have spoken with, with Mr. Tagg, and we have had several discussions in reference to this, this project. I've also discussed it with several members of the, of the council. And of course, not to, to interfere with, with your time, Roland, but we have, I believe, reached a gentleman's agreement to, to defer this matter. It's, it's a very unique situation that I think not only affects Ward 7, but it has a direct and indirect effect upon, I think, a large issue that is part of the city as a whole as it relates to transportation with, with Greyhound or, you know, the bus system. And...
Well, Roland, what's your, your thoughts on a, on a deferment? Because I...
That would be fine. My preferred time would be November 13th if you have a meeting that day.
That would be my preferred time, Skip, as well. I'm not going to be here on the 22nd, so this does have an impact on Ward 6 as well, given that the current bus station is located downtown. And there is a real urgency. The lease is up. You're, you have to move. We don't have a lot of time.
Yeah, we don't want to wind up without being able to have bus service.
Right.
So I mean, we, we do need to move on this. But if, if you're okay with the deferral, let's just make sure we roll up our sleeves and get something done on that day.
Mayor, can I ask, or Jim, can I ask? I mean, on Thursday, we're going to select consultants for the bus route study. There isn't currently a bus route that goes to MLK in Reno. I mean, is that, can that not be added into the purview of this, this study, which is supposed to be done within two months, is my understanding? I mean, that would seem to be an important component of revamping our bus routes, is where the Greyhound bus station is going to go.
Certainly don't have a problem with that.
But that would require a deferral until December, potentially.
Oh, I, I think beyond that. By the time we select someone and negotiate a contract and get the contract approved and do the work, I, I'm sure we're, it's, it's going to be much longer than that.
So, so you don't expect this results of the study by the end of the year?
Gosh, I would think it would be hard for us to get a contract by the end of the year. Yeah. So I would say not.
Then how much further do you think to do the actual study, to get the stop data study and then do the actual study?
You know, we don't have a consultant, so we haven't negotiated, so I, I don't know what their timeframe would be. I mean, I'm, I'm sure we could, we could, we could pair that out and make that a, you know, a fast-track part of the project. But I'd hate to commit on that at this point in time without even having a consultant onboard.
And there's only about 13 months left for them to continue to operate downtown. And so, you know, we've got a timeline here to identify a location, to do a build-out, to get it ready. And we're really, I think, if I'm correct, Roland, really pressing a time deadline here.
Well, Roland, when would you, when would your client like to have the new station open?
Well, I believe it's about 18 months. There's a...
Okay. So there'd be, there'd be time to adjust our bus routes. But you can't even start that process unless you get the zoning approved.
No, I, I mean, the lease term downtown is 18 months.
I see. So when, when would your client like to then open at the new location?
I would imagine it's going to take four to five months to do that. There's paving to do, there's reworking the building, so forth.
I would think at least that much.
Yeah, but his client can't start anything until zoning.
I understand. So I, I think what we're saying is, let's separate the two ideas. But it looks like we're going to have time to, to adjust our bus routes. But I agree that, you know, if, if we're going to move the Greyhound station, we probably ought to be adjusting our public transit accordingly. Okay. I, I think we're all on the same page here.
Okay.
Let's see if we can get this done in mid-November then.
And I would, I would just, I mean, I'm just hearing things second and third hand, but I'm hearing things like to make it financially viable. There's a potential 10-year commitment. And, I mean, at some point, the Santa Fe Station needs to enter the, the discussion. I mean, that, to me, seemed, would seem like the ultimate destination, and this is temporary.
Well, hopefully, we'd be able to do that. But it is, the lease that we'll sign with the new owners would be for 10 years. So we don't have much choice. There's, I think, $800,000 going into this project to move it. And so that 10 years, the owner's putting some money in, they need some time to recoup what they're putting in, and Greyhound's putting money in.
And we have not yet a car at the Santa Fe Station.
Right. I mean, wherever the intermodal hub is, I mean, that, that would seem to be the ultimate destination.
But it might be, but we can't wait, given the timeframe we're operating, until all these studies are completed and got the bus system designed and our intermodal hub is determined.
Well, maybe we should have had this discussion earlier than now, but I'm just saying that...
We've been talking about this for over a year, Ed.
To write off interstate buses going to the intermodal hub for 10 years is concerning.
Well, we've been talking about this project for over, of over a year now. Pete brought it up, I think, a year ago, suggesting a relocation of the bus station. And so it's not, it's not come in recently, and it's not being rushed through. It's the result of trying to find an alternate location in that area. Now, ideally, they would be downtown, but where is the bus station going to be?
Yeah. I, I would say that, you know, ultimately, I think it should be there. Roland, if you would just pass along our sentiments to your client that we're concerned about a 10-year lease because we think that it would be more appropriate if it were at the, at the, at the transit hub, but obviously, that's his decision ultimately. And I guess, you know, a lease wouldn't preclude him from, from moving out. It would just require him to consider the, the options. But 10 years does seem beyond the timeline from when we think it'd be conducive for the passengers. But, you know, again, this is a, a private business, and you locate in a number of places.
I'll talk to him about that.
All right.
But I think that between the owner and Greyhound, they've, they've settled on that time period, and maybe they can reduce it.
Yeah.
I think in all fairness, Mayor, really, and, you know, the way time flies these days, 10 years, to have established a full intermodal transit hub is not unreasonable to consider. And, you know, maybe it's a little shorter than that, but, and we have a ton of work to do before we get to realize that long-term goal.
Right.
We have a short-term problem that we need to resolve.
Get, get you some options there, Roland.
You know, I...
Let's, let's move forward on the zoning here, Skip. Are we going to defer this until the 13th?
13th.
Okay. Do we have a second? All right. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Deferred. Thank you. All right. Item 8AC is a zoning case in Ward 4. This one was recommended for denial at the planning commission. And Pete, we have some people that have signed up to speak.
I would just soon hear from the protestors first. I talked to, is Mrs. McBride here?
Yes.
Before we start, I need to apologize to you. You and I talked last night and I said I didn't, hadn't had any conversations with the developer beforehand. When I went back and reviewed my files after we hung up last night, I realized I had had some, and that'll come out today. But I wanted to tell you that before, before you hear it some other way because I'm, I was just mistaken. I had talked to them about some of the aspects of it, and I think they're going to explain some of that today. So, I just, I just wanted to tell you that.
Okay. You want to hear from the protestors?
I'd just soon hear from the protestors first. I think the application pretty well speaks for itself, although there, I, I think the applicant is, wants to modify it somewhat, but I think we'd just soon hear from the protestors first.
All right. LeAnn Jones? We'll need your name and address for the record.
I'm LeAnn Jones. I live at 14700 Prairie Lane. And this proposal to rezone is, I have five acres, and this development is going to come right to my back fence where the power pole is. I have many animals. I am concerned about air pollution. I am concerned about what are they going to do for their septic lines? I am concerned about the wildlife. I've seen a scissor-tailed flycatcher. I used to have mockingbirds. Alligator turtle ran across the acreage. And I even picked up a prairie king snake, which I took to the Department of Wildlife, and they said that they are becoming very rare in that vicinity that I live in. And I'm afraid that a lot of development is going to just clear out all these animals. I worked for the DMV for 31 years, and I am retired now. I want to live my life in peace and quiet.
All right. LeAnn, thank you for coming down.
Yes.
Appreciate your comments. Rocky Harper? Rocky, we'll, we'll need your name and address for the record.
Okay. I'm here with my wife today, Susan Harper, and we live at 9209 Buttonfield Avenue in Oklahoma City. And we have land adjacent to the proposed pud.
Okay. And you're opposed?
We're opposed to this because when we bought land here, and we had, we had the option to buy land, you know, in many places, but we bought here because the whole quarter section is agricultural. So, we went in with an expectation that we would be able to live in a rural setting. And, you know, now we're seeing that if this pud comes in, that won't happen. They'll build all around us. Other residents have the same concern. So, our, the main point of our opposition is that we expected to live in this rural setting, completely agricultural. Everybody has at least five acres. And we see that now that that's, that's in jeopardy.
Okay. Fair enough. Thanks, Rocky.
Thank you.
Jackie McBride?
Good morning. I live in the Prairie Hills Estates.
Okay.
And it will be adjoining the proposed addition. My property will not directly be adjoining to the property that's being proposed. However, there is a pond. Do you see it over here?
On the right side?
Yeah.
Uh huh.
I already get runoff from my neighbor's pond, and I have no idea what they propose to do with this great big pond over here. My, it's, one of my neighbors have said that it's actually mushy feeling when you go over. I do know that, based on my experience from living out there, the ground is lots of clay and it kind of is packed together. So, it's hard to get a perk test.
So, you have environmental concerns?
Sir?
You have environmental concerns about...
I do. I do.
Okay.
Yes. I, I feel, I'm scared because I've experienced a person's septic system going bad, failing, and they had to go with the aerobic system. Now, I'm still a little bit afraid of that because an aerobic system is not a forever thing. We don't have any services out there right now. And I just, I, I hope that you will go along with the proposal to deny this, at least for the time being, and see what's going to happen in the future.
All right. Jackie, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Pete, what you want to do?
At this point, I'd like to hear from the applicant. There are some comments. If you'd just follow some of the concerns they have, Mr. Box, and kind of talk a little bit about, again, Ms. McBride, I, Mr. Box and I had talked, and I, I just completely, I, I thought we were talking about two separate things. That, that's what happens when I'm talking to a constituent and my Cardinals are losing on, on television. It, I lost my track, train of thought there while we were talking. So, if you'll go ahead and talk to her about what you and I talked about this morning mainly, but what we talked about leading up to this point.
Yes. Good morning. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. A couple of the issues, as the councilman said, we spoke this morning, and we would be willing to agree to a continuance except for we have a, a contract issue. My client, Justin Rhodes, who is here with me today, had asked for a, a extension on the contract several weeks ago from the property owner, and he said no because he has a backup contract if this zoning case does not go through. So, he is set to close within a week, so we can't continue it. On the environmental issues, we are willing to commit to an aerobic system. And I got a, a little lesson on how an aerobic system works earlier today. So, the way it works, it's a series of tanks, and the water is treated, tank after tank. And then, once it's, it is climically cleared and there are no, there are no contaminants left in the water, sprinkler head pops up and discharges that water onto the lawn. Now, the DEQ regulates all of this. And the only way that you can have an aerobic system is if you have public water. And that's one of the other issues with this site is we do have public water, so that, that allows us to be un-aerobic, and we'll commit to always be un-aerobic. But by the time that water is sprayed over a lawn, it has no contaminants in it anymore. And the DEQ also regulates at what time that those sprinklers can come on, and it has to happen in the early morning hours. DEQ recommends you, you check them once a month, so it's heavily regulated. We'll have to meet everything the DEQ asks for and before that they'll sign off on. Now, on the issue of the density, when we came before the planning commission, we had a slightly denser application. Since then, my client has agreed to drop several lots, and so we're now at 22 lots, and that's what we will be willing to commit to. Now, we do have a, a plat that's drawn here, and I'll be, and I'll show the protestors as well, but as you can see, the larger lots are all to the west. So, all the folks that live over here are going to be next to the larger lots, and you have some that are an acre and a half, this is 1.7 acres. Our minimum lot size is a half acre, but everything on the west is at least three-quarters of an acre. So, the ones that are a half acre are closer to the east, and at some point, that would likely be commercial or something else. So, but we're willing to sit down with the neighbors and visit with them. And like I said, the, the 22 lots is, is what we'll commit to, but if we can move a, a lot around to, to help them out, my, my client is, is more than willing to do that, and we spoke about it this morning.
Can you address the, the concern that Ms. McBride had about the, the pond that's there? My conversation with her indicated that it was very marshy around the pond. She hadn't been there, she'd really like to go take a look at it.
Is that the pond in East?
But she indicated it was marshy around it.
Warren Peacock with WPM Design Group. The pond is currently going to be part of the lots, and we were not planning on making any improvements to that pond. Obviously, if there's some soil conditions that have to be addressed, we'll have to work with the builders to get those, the home builders to get those addressed. But at this point, we were not planning on doing any improvements to any of the natural drainage way through there. It's all going to be left natural and unimproved. So, that's the current plan. Now, if the...
So, you don't, you don't plan to do anything to the pond? It's going to stay where it is and just be part of some of these lots, the larger lots that are going to be in the northeast corner? Some of those lots are going to contain...
Right. I think there's about three or four lots that will have shoreline of that pond that will be part of their lot. It's basically a nice amenity that we don't want to go in there and really do much to destroy that environment.
Does the application today require that you stay with the lot lines that you have on that drawing?
I don't believe so. It's just, go ahead.
It has some language that it's pursuant to the exhibit. What we can do is modify it to, we'll commit to the 22 lots, therefore, reaching the density that we want to reach. But we can amend this pursuant to, to our discussions with the neighbors.
What, what would the amendment entail? Would it come, would you come back before us to amend it, or would it be at the planning commission? How would that, how would amendment work?
At some point, they're going to have to file a plat, a preliminary and a final, and that's where those lines have to be determined.
At that point, it would have to be approved by the planning commission.
Right. And that would go back to planning commission.
Okay. One of the things that, that I was concerned about, and this is something that consistent with what I told Ms. McBride last night, I was disappointed that there had not been a meeting between the surrounding community and, and the developer. I mean, it just seems like when you're talking about making this kind of a change of meeting, it's just something that ought to happen. In relation, in, in, as, in response to the comments, rather than have the applicant make the response about the density of the surrounding property, is that the property to the south is not five acres any longer, and there's much, there's a substantial amount of property to the east that is no longer five acres. One of the things, I don't know how long any of you folks have lived out there, but the advent of water that's accessible is something relatively recent. That's not, I, that, the, we weren't permitting taps to the big line when it was a, I think there's two lines there, a 48 and a 60. Is that, is that right? Is that right, Bob?
I believe so. The one they would access is a 12-inch and a 100-foot.
Right. And so, that has brought it, that, once you bring city water to an area, you, you change the character of what can be built there. That's just the nature of the beast. I mean, once city water's there, that means that people don't have to rely on wells. The concerns about the, the soil perking is, is not, is not a question anymore because you don't have to drill 22 water wells to make it work, which, again, that's something you and I discussed last night on the phone, Ms. McBride, that I would not, I would not consider moving the approval of this matter had it, had all those people being forced to be put on water wells, because I just don't think that's environmentally a sound way to do it. But once you bring treated city water to the place, you, you do two things. One, you provide, you, you provide it much safer environmentally. And second, you eliminate some of the concerns that, that those of us that live in rural areas have about fire, because you have, fire hydrants can be available to bring water to a fire. So, water makes a difference. Once water runs along fairly close to any rural property, once city water's there, the changes, changes are coming. They're, they're, that's just the way, the nature of the beast. Hopefully, we can make changes in an orderly, progressive way that are, that really is compatible with moving from a dense urban environment to a rural environment. But I don't think it's, it's realistic to expect that it will never change because it, it, once city water comes, I think it changes the whole paradigm as to development. Since the, since the lot lines could be changed later, what I'd like to do is, I know that I can't, once we vote to approve it, and if, if the council approves it, we don't have any way to go back and enforce an agreement to have a meeting with the neighborhood, but, or with the surrounding property owners. I, I'm going to have to take your word for that and your client's word for that. But I would very much think that you ought to take a look at that, because you can adjust those lot sizes that surround that pond to eliminate some of their concerns, their environmental concerns about, not so much about water safety, because I think, based on what you've told me, that's going to be taken care of. Not so much about septic systems, because you're not going to have a septic system, but about just the, the lot sizes along that northwest corner of that and all, all along the very west side of it, I think are going to be relevant to people that live there.
Absolutely. And we'll, I will go get everyone's information after the meeting and commit to you and this council that we will sit down, me and my client, with the protestors.
Does the plat that you showed include, have 24 lots or 20, is it down to 22?
22.
It's 22.
Yes, sir.
But those lines could still be adjusted some.
If need be. Yes, sir.
I think one of the people that spoke, I think the gentleman in the back, does, does he own that five-acre tract in the, that's directly south of the part of it?
Yes, sir.
There, there might be some relief for him there on lot sizes also, because he's going to butt up against that. The, 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 the line of, of lots that's, that is, are east of the road that goes north, they're going to butt against property that is obviously going to be, the development's going to change. I mean, I have somebody contact me probably every two weeks with an idea of what they want to do on Sooner, and they're not five-acre tracts, I can tell you. They're, they're, they're commercial. In fact, I got, had somebody contact me wanting to put duplexes in there, which is, I'm not, I'm not going to bite that, but, but, so, things are going to happen along Sooner because of the, one, because of the traffic, and two, because of the availability of water. And that just, that, you can't, that's just part of progress that we can't stop. It's going to happen. With, with your commitment that you will arrange very shortly a meeting with any of the surrounding property owners that want to, with the idea in mind that you'll listen to what they've got to say about making adjustments to lot size, and also, my, I have some concerns about the environmental impact of that pond. To say you're not going to improve it, I think is a bad choice of words. Frankly, I would think, I'd say you don't intend to change it at this point, but maybe some improvements might be necessary to protect it, because if it is a marshy site, there's environmental, always environmental concerns about water life and so, things that live around water, that, I think that's one of the reasons people live out there, is because they like that. They like the idea of there being wildlife and there being free water, and I don't mean free in the terms of cost, I mean freestanding water. I know that's part of what I enjoy about living out there, and I would, I just want to do what I can to try to protect that at, while at the same time recognizing that the future doesn't hold, that it's always going to be farmland.
Absolutely. In that pond, you know, the, the vision that Mr. Rhodes had was that when we say not improve, what, what we really mean is they'll be incorporated into the lots, and the people who live out there will be able to, to maintain it and utilize it, and hopefully, it's a benefit to the 22 homeowners in this area.
Well, I want you to try to be as sensitive in the, in the practice as I'm trying to be in, with language here.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's important to me that, that people that take the time to come down here and talk to us are not ignored once this happens, that we do whatever you can do within the constraints of, of good business judgment to try to, to address their concerns. I think they're valid concerns. I do think most people move someplace and always expect it to look like it, it looked the day they moved there. It's just not going to happen. That's just not the way it goes. It doesn't, once, once you bring water and, and better highways, like, you know, they're, they're right at the crossroads, it seems to me, of, of quite a bit of future development in southeast Oklahoma City. Sooner is a very busy, a lot of traffic on Sooner. It takes, it takes traffic and rooftops to attract commercial, but I think commercial's on its way very shortly, because I see rooftops and traffic there, so. And, and with water, it's probably unlikely we're going to get sewer there in any reasonable time, but certainly with water, I think it's going to be a hot development area, because I think we see activity out there that would indicate that that's right. So, I'm taking you at your word, Mr. Box, and your client nodded a minute ago when I said that, that you will meet with them and, and try as best you can to be sensitive to their concerns.
Absolutely.
There are probably more people that are concerned than these three that were here today, too.
And if they want to bring, you know, everyone that, that they know, we're, you will absolutely...
And I, I want you to reach outside of that, that notice list.
Okay.
Because that notice list is not big enough to, to, to take into consideration all the people that live there.
Pete, Pete, I know we're short on time, but do you mind if I ask Russell one question about the staff report?
No.
Can, Russell, can you just talk to, I mean, this, the staff report says that based, based on the information available, the proposed development is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And it raised... plan, and it raises questions that the proposed development is not in compliance with the southeast sector plan, which states, quote, "It's imperative to maintain the sector's low density and rural character to protect economic and environmental resources," end quote. It's true that there's water, but there's no sewage, right? The nearest fire station's over six miles away. What, A, do you believe this is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the southeast sector plan, and B, if it's not, what is the purpose of the comprehensive, I mean, what are we doing in revising it if we're, if staff is telling us it's not in compliance with the comprehensive plan, and then we go ahead and move forward?
It's not in compliance with the plan, and with the southeast sector plan, which occurred several years ago, there was a very extensive outreach effort to people living in the southeast sector, and it was their desire, pretty emphatically stressed to us, that the reason they were living in a rural area was to enjoy some of the values you've heard today and you've heard in the past, that they didn't want that urban density. We think it was very unfortunate that water line was extended to the north here originally, and that set off this domino effect now where people are applying for subdivisions at essentially an urban density. The concern for us is, yes, you've got water, but then, in due course, you're eventually going to get a demand for sewer, you've got a demand for increased other services, police, fire, code enforcement, et cetera. Councilman Wyatt had mentioned commercial, so in effect, you then create a, an urban community where none was anticipated in the plan, because the plan had projected this area as a rural area. In terms of trying to secure orderly development, that was the, that was the idea. This was not targeted for urban development. There are other areas where, plenty of other areas in the city where that could occur. So, that's why we, as the planning department, were strongly opposed to this, this particular subdivision, because there have been other ones proposed in the area, and there will be obviously other ones in the future. We are, again, sort of reacting to outside forces rather than adhering to the plan, so we were, as I said, strongly opposed to it, and I know Mr. Box disagrees with me on that, but...
We've got about one minute before we're going to go into a lengthy recess, so...
I'll be real quick, and I agree with the sector plan, but what makes this site a little different is the fact that there's water. The majority of the southeast sector, because the rural character, there isn't water. So the availability of water here makes that critical. This is a 17-acre site. Our average dwelling units are right at .8 per acre. Immediately south, you have about 100-acre development that's at .85 dwelling units. To the east, you have half-acre lots that actually is higher density than ours. And about a mile and a half south and east, you have a 140-acre development that is .68. So we are nowhere near the most dense, we're towards the least dense of all these recent developments out there, and that's because of the water, and that's what differentiates this from the bulk of the southeast sector.
All right.
And to add, most of those developments have been there for years.
Yeah. Pete, do you want to make a motion on this today?
They're not new. Yes, I'm going to move approval.
Okay. Motion is for, to approve the request.
Is the East man? David, is the East man?
Yes, I handed in this morning.
Yes, he had indicated to me that he was going to give it on approval, so...
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Motion in a second. Ready to vote? Cast your votes. The motion passes 5-3.
Thank you.
The motion passes 6-3.
Thank you.
We're going to recess the meeting until 12 o'clock. We have an important event that's taking place just a couple of blocks from here, the opening of the Devon Tower, and the council is requested and asked to be there, and there's a consensus that the council wants to attend. So we'll be back, 12 o'clock.
Where did we leave off? We just finished... We've returned from recess, and I'll call the meeting back to order. Our first item is 8D, ordinance on final hearing, PU, no, I'm sorry, ordinance on final hearing related general schedule of fees on the prices of resale permits. This is the third time we've...
Right. Marge, she gave you a presentation a couple of weeks ago, and this had to do with the off-road permits, and we wanted to clean up how we're allocating those fees between the vendors and the city.
Move the item.
Excuse me, how did we come up with the name resale permit?
What's that?
How did we come up with the name resale permits?
Because it's a resale, because it's the first time it's been sold, is that what your point is? I don't know.
I just thought it was an interesting use of the word, that's all.
I have a motion, I don't, did I get a second? Any other discussion on it? On the favor, cast your vote. It passes unanimously. Do we need the emergency on this?
No.
Okay. Next is item E, public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Anybody here to speak on dilapidated structures? I have a motion in a second. Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. Item F is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Anybody here to speak on unsecured structures? Motion in a second. Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. Item G is a public hearing on a resolution adopting the CIP plan for fiscal years 2013 through 2017.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we've had several presentations over the last several weeks at council, but Doug Dollar here today is to give us a little bit of a wrap-up.
Good afternoon. The item before you this morning is the adoption of the five-year capital improvement plan. Before you vote on the item, we just wanted to kind of quickly review some of the steps that have been taken to get us here and some of the overall statistics for the plan. We began the development of the plan last year, last fall, as departments began to put their projects together. The first external review occurred in March and April as preliminary presentations were made to the planning commission. Additional internal review occurred during the summer, and introduction to the, introduction to the city council finance committee was made in August, with presentations by departments in September and October. Introduction to the planning commission took place on September 13th. You can see on the slide I've got here listed all the various boards, trusts and commissions that have also reviewed the projects that relate to their specific area, and in addition, the planning commission has reviewed this, and the planning department has confirmed that the projects fall within the parameters established in the comprehensive plan, and it was officially approved October 11th by the planning commission. The funding for the plan comes from a number of different sources. Trust funds make up the largest portion of the funding at 39.4%, with the Oklahoma City Water Utility Trust making up the majority of that category at $652.6 million. Special tax funds at 31.8% are another large contributor. MAPS III projects are the biggest single tax fund, contributing $508.8 million. Geo bonds account for 16, or, sorry, 15.8% or $387.2 million of the plan, and then the unfunded portion of the plan is at 6.6%. This includes projects such as the public safety radio system upgrade, some of the parks projects that Mr. Wisenhunt talked about during his presentation, as well as some of the riverfront redevelopment authority projects. Overall, the plan is $2.4 billion. You should have received a full copy of the plan, and there's additional detail in terms of the breakdown there in funding. I won't go into a lot of detail on the types of projects that we have here. Suffice it to say, if you flip through it, there's almost 700 projects listed in the plan, ranging from $141 million to begin the second pipeline from Lake Otocah, down to things as small as a few thousand dollars for remodeling some office space for our IT department. We've got a number of different categories, you can see them here on the slide, but again, this is kind of our guide over the next couple of years of what we expect to do capital-wise. Your approval here will finalize that process for this, for this coming several years, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the plan.
Your honor, I have just a quick question. On the summary of capital improvement plans by funding sources, page two, we list revenue bonds. What kind of revenue bonds are issued?
We've got revenue bonds from the hotel motel tax, pay for some of the projects. There are revenue bonds also at the airports to pay for, like, the parking facility, or the new, I'm sorry, rental car facility, and...
The water trusts are all revenue bonds?
Right.
Okay, so they're included in this number here?
Well, we're on a different slide, I think, than the one you...
I'm looking at page two, and the total, so our total source of funds is .45 million.
Oh, in the, in the agenda item?
Yes, summary of capital, capital improvement plan by funding source.
Right, I think the water, even though they will be funded by bonds, are listed under trusts as a funding source.
We have, the airport trust is listed separately.
Right.
We've got about 100, almost $120 million worth of those listed. I was curious, what kind of revenue source supports the bonds?
Right. The, well, let me, let me back up. I've got, I've got the listing back at the office. Unfortunately, it, again, hundreds of projects, I'd be happy to provide that to you. Unfortunately, some of the categorization between type of funding and the organization or the trust get kind of crossed a little bit. So sometimes, like, for example, the Water Utility Trust does use water bonds, but we counted that under trust, so I'll have to go back and reconfirm which pieces are under revenue bonds.
Okay, thank you. There's no hurry on this.
Okay, no, it's an easy answer, we've got it. If I had my spreadsheet here, I could pull it up for you right now, but...
Doug, I had a very simple question. I think we've got, on that slide after this one, where we talked about the projects, we've got a 12% or so designated to streets, and another .5% that's designated as traffic. Is that signalization and things?
Correct, right. Those are differentiated in the geo bond projects between traffic projects and street projects.
All right, thank you.
Any other question? Thank you, Doug. Do I have a motion on this? Need a motion? Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. Item H is a public hearing, I believe this is the second one on this item, a resolution to amend the other projects category on the fire sales tax fund. Motion in a second. Any other question? Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. Item I is revocable right-of-way permit for the downtown Oklahoma City, Inc., Sand Ridge Santa Run on December the 8th. Ward 6.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't see anybody here from Sand Ridge to talk about the project, but this is a run that's occurred many times in downtown Oklahoma City and helps to kick off the holiday season, so I would recommend approval.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. Item J, number one, is a revocable permit for the Piranha Brothers Event Management to hold the 2012 Oklahoma Ultra Running Championships along, it's on October 27th and 28th along West Hefner Road, Ward 8.
It's a good project. Before I move for approval, I have a question. Will the park be open to the public during...
I can't answer that. Hopefully, Mr. Winger's back there that can come in and answer some questions on that.
Well, subject to that particular question, I, as close to the public, I would have some real problem.
This is not the first year this has been run, so I don't know, this is at least...
Well, the first year, the trails have been improved the way they are. There's a lot of people using those trails now that didn't use it before.
Wendell.
Wendell, yes.
And Eric.
How can I help you? Sorry, I didn't hear your question.
On the ultimate run at Lake Hefner, will the, will the park and the trails be closed for that event?
That's entirely within Bluff Creek Park, and during that event, yes, the park will be totally occupied by this promotion and this activity.
So no walking will be allowed on those trails?
It would be very inconvenient, but that is, they have not precluded others from using the park, but there'll be a competition going on at the time of this event, and it would not be...
And they'll be using the walking trails for that competition?
Yes, sir, they use both the walking trail, that is for the event, and the mountain bike trail. They run on both, and it's as much, and some competitors compete for a solid 24 hours, as you noted in the memo. I will not be entered.
I don't have to worry about you running into me. I move approval.
I have a motion in a second. I'm just getting ready to say surely they don't run 24 hours, do they? And evidently, they do. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. It passes unanimously.
That one makes as about as much sense to me as the next one does.
Okay. Item two is Running Dirty LLC to hold the Ultimate Mud Warrior 5K and 10K runs along the North Canadian River on November 3rd in Ward 7.
Well, we're going to be dirty, might as well be on the river being dirty. Is there anyone, is this a nonprofit program?
I don't believe so. I think this is Roger Skeens' production.
Is this Roger?
He's done a number of events in, along the river before. They've got some mud pits that are not on city property, that are on other, other property that they will be using as far as mud pits, and then they'll be going through the mud pits and then running on some areas that are on the river.
Because I hope this doesn't open up a, a door for requests for the bike trails on the river also, but Wendell, is this Roger Skeens', is this on his property, just adjacent to the river, is that right?
Yes, sir. The river will be used in the event, but it'll be to move from one portion of private property to the next. There will be pits dug that will be mud-filled.
Okay.
That the folks will jog through, but all those pits are on private property. The only use of the river will be to run from private property down the river to the private property.
Okay. Well, the Riverfront Authority, they, they gave their rubber stamp to it for approval, so we'll move it. Recommend it? Yes.
I have a motion in a second. Cast your vote.
Thank you, Wendell.
Yes, sir.
Passed unanimously. Item K is a resolution adopting the city council priorities.
Mayor and council, we went through a workshop several weeks ago, and after that, oh, and came up with some general parameters, and after that, staff put together and tried to put that into a document, and then we've met with you in small groups to try to, try to further define those priorities, and Craig is here to present those to you this morning.
All right, as Jim said, we met back in August initially with the council and had the workshop to be able to identify priorities. There were several priorities that were identified. We weren't able to finalize during that workshop, but have met with council members in small groups over the last few weeks to be able to refine those a little bit further. Some priorities have been combined, some priorities were dropped from the previous list, and we have some new priorities, and so, we have the list here to present this morning. We did also identify some strategic, or some progress indicators that will demonstrate progress in achieving or addressing the priorities that have been identified, and so we wanted to present that to you this morning. The five priorities that we have are providing a safe and secure community, and that was a priority that had existed previously, maintaining strong financial management, which has consistently been within our priorities, promoting thriving neighborhoods, this is a new one, and we'll look at the details of this a little bit more, combines a couple of areas of focus on neighborhoods and development, developing a transportation system that works for all citizens, and then supporting high-quality public education and community health and wellness. In providing a safe and secure community, the progress indicators that were identified were a crime rate, a percent of citizens who report that they feel safe, this is currently a measure that's within the citizen survey, and then police, fire and IMSA response times. We also included a cardiac arrest survival rate, which is more of a health outcomes measure for IMSA and for the emergency medical services. Some of these measures, we're refining still and defining the measures, particularly on... Some of these measures, we're refining still and defining the measures, particularly on ones that we haven't tracked before, and so they may change some as we get them defined, as we work with some of the organizations that will be partnering with to collect the information. The second one is to maintain strong financial management. This is one that tied together citizen confidence, it tied together efficiency, government efficiency, and then strong financial management. The measures that we pulled together for this one are the percent of citizens who are satisfied with the quality of city services. And the thinking on this one, even though it's not directly a reflection on financial management, is that we're appropriately using the revenues and expenditures and balancing the growth in expenditures with revenues to ensure that we can maximize the resources to provide the services that our citizens expect. Maintaining our AAA bond rating, which is something that's before you regularly, that's very important to us, helps us with our borrowing costs, and is a reflection, again, of strong financial management. And then, the percentage of general fund budget maintained in unbudgeted reserves. And that is currently, the policy is between 8 and 15%, and that was updated about a year and a half ago, and we're within that policy and actually at the top end of that policy Promoting thriving neighborhoods, this one combined, one issue that came out of the planning session was promoting and supporting strong neighborhoods and revitalizing neighborhoods, as well as strategic development. And so, both of those were combined together for one priority of promoting thriving neighborhoods. And the measures that we have right now are an inventory of vacant and abandoned buildings. This is one that's a new one, and it's one that we're gonna have to work through with the planning department and see what information we can collect and how we'll be able to report that. So that one may change some as we go along, but the idea was to identify the number of vacant and abandoned buildings so that we can track progress and making sure that we limit that number and their impact on the city and city services. Percent of population living within the inner loop, and this is the one we'll have to evaluate to determine what the targets will be on that. And then, the percent of residents who say that their neighborhood is a great place to live. This is one that probably what we'll end up doing is incorporating that into the citizen Developing a transportation system that works for all citizens, this one combines a couple of existing priorities and one that existed in quality of life previously. This has, first of all, our top priority that we get back from our citizens on the citizen survey consistently is maintaining and providing our city streets. That will be included in this priority. Additionally, we have public transit incorporated into this, which before, still alone, is a separate policy, as well as the idea of the walkability and providing additional walking and biking trails and sidewalks for pedestrian and cyclist transportation. And so, those are all incorporated here, and you can see in our measures that we have the percent of citizens satisfied with the condition of city streets, which is a consistent measure that we've had, number of miles of trails and sidewalks that are constructed, public transportation ridership. This is one that hasn't been on our strategic priorities for the council, but has been within the Metro Transit or the Transit Public Transportation and Parking Authority in the department measures and in the strategic business plan. And then, the average commute time within Oklahoma City. This is one that we can pull from the census, and we'll probably have to use a representation of Oklahoma County because they track that by county, but this is another one that we'll continue to work on the definition. The final priority that we have is one that combined two priorities that aren't necessarily directly connected in their nature. One is supporting high-quality public education, and the other is community health and wellness. And they're two priorities that are important to the council, but they're not priorities that are under the direct responsibility, at least in all areas. And so, those two were combined for that reason, that they're more of influence priorities than they are the direct responsibility. The measures that we have right now for those that are identified is the percent of citizens who report regular leisure activity. This is one we'll probably end up adding to our citizen survey. There are a couple of measures that are out there, but don't really, there's one measure that we know that is out there that's on a state level, and so we haven't found one yet that's directly on a city level, so it may be something that we include in our citizen survey, but we're still working on a measure or the final definition of that measure. Percent of citizens within a half-mile of a recreation facility, trail, or park. And then, we move into the education, and what we have right now is one measure of graduation rate, which is really the measure of successful completion of the high school academic program, and then, percent of third graders reading at or above grade level, which is really an indication of academic achievement that helps to provide a foundation for future academic success. And so, those are two we'll continue to work with the schools and refining those to make sure that we can get the information that we need for that. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
On your definition, graduation rate in Oklahoma City public schools, what do you mean by Oklahoma City public schools?
The plan initially is to focus on the Oklahoma City public school system with both of these measures.
See, I was afraid that's what you were gonna say, because quite frankly, in my ward, only a de minimis number of the students attend Oklahoma City public schools. They all attend other school districts. And overall, through the city, I would imagine that more than 50% of our kids go to non-Oklahoma City public schools, so...
And that's something we can work with other school districts on, and again, with the definition of that, that we may have one that shows by school system what the graduation rates are, and so we'll take a look at that.
I think Larry's right. I think that we could address it simply by changing the P and S to small instead of capital letters.
Okay. We can do that.
Council okay with that small change, but to expand the one district to 24? That we're taking ownership over the graduation rates of all the district that serve kids that live in Oklahoma City and not just the one?
Right, okay.
You said, serve kids that live in Oklahoma City. Does that include other, I mean, we look at the third grade groups of schools that are within our city limits, but like Deer Creek, for instance, has schools in our city limits and outsiders.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is that we don't want to send a message to any parent who lives in Oklahoma City that we're more concerned about another school than we are their school. I think that's the message. I mean, we're still in a relationship with the school districts. We're not running the school districts. I think it's...
We'll work on that.
I think it's more punctuation than it is anything else.
There's gonna be a challenge getting into a mixed school district and getting the grade average for Oklahoma City school districts, or Oklahoma City citizens only because they're not...
That's right. Other districts do not break it down by where their kids live. And so, when they serve multi...
So we'll work on that to come back with some ways to monitor that.
But we have no reason to believe that their graduation rate is gonna be different on one side of the city limits line than the other. So I mean, if we're using their graduation rates, I think it's probably gonna be reflective of how the kids are working.
That's correct.
And we'll work with the school system and see what information.
I mean, it's probably a reasonable idea to list each one of those, instead of trying to combine them into one number, to list those as distinct school districts and reflect each of those rates.
Yeah, it might provide a higher level of accountability and exposure that they're not getting today.
And it will encourage our citizens to move out of Oklahoma City school district.
Oh.
Or the other way around.
Or the other way around. Hopefully, someday it'll be the other way around. Not quite yet. When should we expect some kind of report on the progress we've made in the area? I know some of our time-limited, time calendar limited in terms of annual survey of our citizens.
Typically, what we do with these, and a lot of these are higher-level measures, is that when we come back with the final performance report for the year, usually, when we complete the fiscal year, we'll do a performance report for the council, and it incorporates those measures at that time.
Well, we can see it one time.
That's typically how we've reported that in the past.
I mean, they're available. My office reviews them monthly, but there are, you know, and so it is available.
And some of these will be annual measures. The ones that are available more regularly, we can make available as often as you'd like.
For example, sometimes, if it's based upon our citizen survey, it's just a one data point.
Right.
Deal that comes in on an annual basis.
But if we've got the information on some of these other measures, might be interesting quarterly to see what we can make any progress on these.
And we do a mid-year report as well, we have available.
We've typically given a mid-year report to council and a final report to council, but we can...
We can do it more frequently if we need to.
Well, it would seem like it might be helpful. We see an area that we're not doing as well as we'd like to do, and in the budget time, we could recognize that, reinforce what they're doing.
Okay. All right, thank you.
On the graduation rate, we're only gonna get that at the end of the year.
And there's a lot of those, councilman, that you're just...
So what are we gonna do with the percentage of third graders reading at or above grade level? I mean, those reports wouldn't, we wouldn't receive any benchmarks from any of the schools until probably close to the end of the year either.
That's right. Yeah. Some of you are gonna have continual information on, like police response times, we'll have, those will be more real-time numbers, and some will just be snapshots on an annual basis.
Larry?
Just one other minor thing. On your thriving neighborhoods, you have percent of city population living within the inner loop? What is your inner loop?
The inner loop, generally defined of 44, 240, and 35.
That gives me a little concern, because I like this next one, a percent of residents saying their neighborhood is a great place to live. I think we ought to make sure that we don't just say, hey, the only neighborhoods we're interested in of having a great place to live are those within the inner loop, because we have other neighborhoods who are challenged outside of that loop, and we need to be conscious of them.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need a resolution adopting these?
We do.
We need a motion.
How about a motion? We're voting on item 8K. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Mayors, we go forward. It was interesting for me to sit back, and this is not staff-driven, this was totally council-driven as we've gone forward, and to sit back and watch council put these priorities together was very interesting to do that. The way you worked together, not all having the same ideas, but yet coming in for a consensus of the ideas that were for the good of the community, I think was very impressive to watch you all work. And then, not only that, after we did the workshop, come back in the way we either modified them or at some point maybe even wordsmithing them to get down to the final priorities. I really think that at the end of the day, you guys did a really good job and came up with a good final product. But the process was, it was kind of neat to watch, and it was quite gratifying how well you worked together going down the line.
Item 8L is a resolution adopting the Employment Land Needs Assessment and Action Plan for Implementation.
Russell Claus is here to just to highlight that. It's been before you before?
It has, and just to reiterate, this is a study that was conducted by city staff and not just the planning department. We worked with Water and Public Works and other departments as well. We also, one of our other partners included the Oklahoma City, Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, and also several private companies, ONG, OG&E, and SAIC, which includes the former Benham Company and the Alliance for Economic Development. So the intent of this study was to identify lands that we need to take greater action to support their retention for the purpose of being able to attract and facilitate the expansion of employers. While we have a lot of land within the city of Oklahoma City, that is somewhat of a blessing and a curse in the sense that because we have a lot of land, people believe that industrially-zoned land or industrially-designated land is really a holding pattern for that land, not the end purpose. Therefore, we had a lot of industrial land that has been fragmented, partialized, and therefore made unsuitable for economic development. And that has been a major issue for the chamber in their recruitment of major employers for the city. So it was our desire with this study to identify areas for further evaluation. The report includes 14 study areas, and they have 14 major recommendations on actions that we should take going forward to be able to support our ability to be able to continue to attract major employers into the city for many years to come. So that's it in a nutshell. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions for Russell?
From one of the comments in the report that talked about the city actually acquiring some land.
Yes.
If we went out to acquire land, this is a question for Kenny, could we use right of eminent domain, acquire the land that we're gonna sell to somebody else or give us?
Only if it was in a blighted area. It would have to be determined to be blighted by the council, and then the Urban Renewal Authority could condemn it.
Yeah, I think that the terminology of implying that the city should take on that role really was meant to include those other agencies that we work with, being the Urban Renewal Authority, the Alliance, et cetera, who would take on that role, using the Urban Renewal Authority powers, also the Industrial and Cultural Facilities Trust, and other trust entities that would pursue that. Because we do not, we can't acquire the land and then be able to turn it over to private development. We're unable to do that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Russell. Yeah, Larry?
Yeah, Russell, on the staff report, under recommended strategies, strategy number one, focused efforts to create development-ready sites, and strategy number four, pursue public purchase or optioning of key properties. It's my understanding that before either of those was actually implemented on a particular situation, that would have to come back...
Correct.
...city council for approval.
Yes, yes. And if there is an intent to option a piece of property, that really is gonna probably go through the Alliance or one of its vehicles to be able to identify those properties that would need to be secured. So it'd go through the Economic Development Trust.
So I'm gonna support the plan, but I do have real reservations about doing that, and I just want to go on record saying that. I think we could get in the future into a speculative position where we might go out and acquire land for a particular project and end up losing a considerable amount of the taxpayers' money on that transaction. And so, with the caveat that we have to approve each one of these, I just wanted to make sure that was the correct interpretation.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Russell, thanks.
Thank you.
Have a motion on item 8L?
Who's the item?
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 8M, I understand we do not need executive session?
Do not.
All right, how about a motion?
Who's the item?
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item 8N, I understand we do not need executive session?
Yes, we do.
Oh, we do need it, okay. How about a motion then to move item 8N into executive session? All right, cast your votes. 8N moves to executive session. Item 8O, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
All right, how about a motion then to strike? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 8P, I understand we do not need executive session. How about a motion to strike? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
On that issue, the mediator will be here to give us a briefing in executive session, either next week or the week after.
Okay. Item nine is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under item nine? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Those items are approved. Items from council. Pat, do you have anything for us today?
No.
All right, Skip?
Yes, last week I had the opportunity to, or was honored to, bring greetings on behalf of the city of Oklahoma City for the National One Church, One Child Organization. Their national conference was held in Oklahoma City at the Marriott, and we were blessed to have in our presence the founder of the One Child, One Church Program, Father George Clement of Chicago, Illinois, who in 1970 established a program to address the disproportionate issue of African-American children in the African-American community who were left in foster placement programs without proper, you know, measures as it relates to adoption. And so, to get families back integrated with children who had been left out on their own became a very great program that saved a lot of children. And one of those children who had been part of this here, the elapidated system of foster care placement, was Antoine Fisher, who is now a writer and producer in California, Los Angeles. And he was a keynote speaker and gave a very powerful testimony of how his life was going through foster care placement and ultimately how he became, how he overcame some of the travesties and the injustice that he had to endure as a child. And now, of course, he goes around and supports programs with social workers, DHS, and other organizations to help children be better placed in homes and the adoption process as overall. The faith-based community in Oklahoma City was very instrumental in bringing this program to Oklahoma City. Reverend Free, Pastor Reed, Reverend Gaddis. Many of the churches in northeast Oklahoma City has been directly involved for the last 15 years as it relates to assisting the Department of Human Services in finding quality homes for children who have been placed in foster care through the unfortunate, you know, issues of parents having children and not being willing to care for those children. of parents having children and not being willing to care for those children. So it was a great evening, and it was absolutely a powerful statement by Mr. Antoine Fisher. And of course, some of you probably remember the movie with Denzel Washington playing in it, and he played also in the movie. But just to have that in Oklahoma City and then the next day, there was a very profound, you know, story about the number of grandparents who are going through the adoption process and, of course, the cost that they have to incur with the bureaucracy of finalizing adoption and the number of children who are out there without parents, without a quality home. And so I was very honored to... I was honored to be a part of the program. And Judge Kirby was also one of the keynote speakers. So that was on behalf of the city of Oklahoma City. It was an honor to be there.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just would like to take this opportunity to publicly congratulate Devin on today's ribbon-cutting of that fantastic skyscraper downtown. It really, I think, just punctuates so much of the exciting renaissance that the community's undergone. And special thanks to Devin and to Larry Nichols for being such a great partner with Oklahoma City.
Okay. David?
No, thank you.
All right. Pete? Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank the neighbors in Windsor Oaks, Neighborhood Association, for the hospitality shown my wife and I last week during their meeting. They had a great program with Brian Doherty coming in and talking about how to beautify your neighborhood. And I would encourage any neighborhood looking for a program to contact Brian. And then Sunday afternoon, I had the privilege of attending a homeowners association of a mandatory association out at the Creeks at Avalon. And it was very interesting out there. They have some great visions for building a pavilion out there with money that they're going to raise off of dues of the homeowners. And it was interesting to me to be in a neighborhood where one of the gentlemen said, what city do we live in? And my children go to Mustang schools. I have a Yukon mailing address. Are you representing Oklahoma City? And so it just told me that, hey, citizens, get involved with your neighborhood association because that's the key to having a quality of life, whether it's a mandatory or whether it's a voluntary homeowners association. Thank you, Your Honor.
Ed?
I know it's late. I don't know where we are in time. I spent most of last week at the Rail Evolution meeting. I have a couple of observations I can... Okay. I think that the first thing I observed is that I think there's a need for us to get better engaged with the national community, the other cities. There's a community streetcar coalition, and basically there's 19 cities. We're really the only city that's engaged in a streetcar that's not part of this coalition. There's 19 cities, and then a lot of industries are part of it as well. At this meeting, basically every city that is doing a streetcar, including in the planning stage, like Kansas City, gave a detailed PowerPoint presentation about where they are and exchanging ideas. And we were really the only city that didn't do that. There was a meeting with the Congressman Blumenauer. The next morning, every city gave a detailed update. We were the only city that really didn't do that. They put out a great book that summarizes economic development and everything. They have a great website. It would cost us $1,500 to be members. That would give us, all of us and anyone we wanted to, access to the website. It would have the streetcar route of every city, where they are in the process, just a great platform to exchange ideas. And so I think that would be $1,500 well spent.
Okay.
They meet every February in Washington. All these cities send delegations, and they meet with the House Transit Committees and the congresspersons and basically lobby for federal funds. We're, as far as I could tell, really the only city not doing that. And it seems like the policy decision we have to make is, do we want federal funds or not? And if we do, then to go and play that game. I find that if House Transit members are seeing all these cities with delegations, and they've got councilpersons and transit officials and as part of these... If we're the only city that's not there, I don't see them directing federal funds towards us if we're the only one not in the room. I mean, there's lots of other reasons why maybe we fall short, but that certainly... But maybe the bigger question is, do we even want to play that game? Do we want federal funds? Because that was debated heavily at this conference, was that some cities had taken on federal funds and were second-guessing whether that was the right move. It adds tremendous costs in terms of the process, the paperwork, doing things that are extraneous to strategizing. There is a new conflict where the feds want this concept called level boarding, where all your sidewalks and your central platforms have to be even with the platform. So in many cities, that means building your sidewalks up to 14 inches. So a lot of cities are having drainage problems and increasing costs as a result of these level boarding requirements. There are buy-American requirements, which I'm not advocating for anything. I'm just saying this was heavily debated. Some cities were saying, you know, we could have gone farther if we had bought our steel rail lines from China or some other country. I'm not advocating for that. I'm just saying, I'm just the messenger, that that was debated, that if you don't take the federal funds, you could potentially extend your rail line much farther because you can buy cheaper. We have a problem that there's a general rule that you can't spend more than 5% of your operating budget than your total transit budget. Our total transit budget is 20 million, so 5% would be 1 million. We're going to spend much more than that. So to try and tinker with that, maybe it's time to abandon the seeking federal funds. I mean, some cities were very jealous of our equity position and our ability to maneuver at our own pace. So it's just a thought. Another thing that was striking was that the majority of these cities have some kind of assessment district, some way to pay for their operations and maintenance. And not only do they have assessment districts and business improvement districts, but it can get vicious, where developers and land property owners and they... This has played itself out, where these property values explode. And so you have developers and real estate owners fighting about where the streetcar goes, which corridor it goes down. And they're willing to tax themselves, and they're willing to do assessments to help pay for the operations and maintenance. Seattle paid more than 55% of their capital costs just from these kind of assessments. And so this is... I would say the majority of the cities are doing that. So maybe this would be the time to enter in discussions with people about as we're... And that's why I'm hesitant to just be married to a certain route, is maybe that should be one of the variables, is how do we pay for operations and maintenance? And do we have any partners along a certain corridor, as in other cities, that would be willing? One gentleman said, you in Oklahoma City, you're like the teenager who's mows somebody's lawn and then knocks on the door and asks to be paid. Maybe you should knock on the door first and then talk about what service you're going to provide. The one... The mayor from Salt Lake talked about, as well as the congressman, there is a concern about discrepancy between level of service between your bus system and your rail system. And one concern I have is that we might be following the path of Atlanta and Los Angeles, who both found themselves on the wrong end of lawsuits from the Environmental Defense Fund because there was such a discrepancy between how their rail riders were treated at their bus... At their transit stops and their level of shelter and their level of being protected from the elements and coffee shops versus their bus rider. And if there's too much of a discrepancy, you invite legal liability on Title VI grounds, and you can be sued because of the discrepancy between the way you're... It's just something to think about, as we're talking about spending 120 million on rail riders, which will largely be of a different socioeconomic class than our bus system. And finally, those cities that have really done this, Portland and Seattle, Gustafson, who we just hired to be part of our team from Portland, really emphasized that they see this not as a transit tool. These cities are adding streetcar in as the final piece to their well-established, robust transit systems. And what they see... What they're using streetcar for is a city shaping tool, not necessarily a ridership paradigm, but how do we want to shape our downtown? Where do we want real estate development? Where do we want economic development? Because it really is a sledgehammer that city after city, year after year, is seeing this explosion of economic development. So where do you want that to occur? Gustafson, I was talking to him afterwards. He said, you know, one thing, you've got this quarter shore area you're trying to develop. You're trying to get housing down there. You know, you've got this sledgehammer. I mean, is that worth thinking about? I mean, if you... As a body, we've instructed the Urban Renewal Authority as a policy that we want to develop quarter shore. But I'm not... I don't know that we've given them the tools to do that. We have a sledgehammer that we potentially could give them. I just think it's worth discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
All good. Thanks, Ed.
Thanks.
Wanted to draw attention to the passing of Ray Ackerman this week. I know everyone here on the council and most of the citizens by now recognize the lifelong commitment that he gave to this community, everything from a mayoral candidate to his professional work, but tireless advocate for Oklahoma City, always optimistic. I still remember one day, and I've told this story many times, you know, it's not unusual for a mayor's calendar to have a lot of events. And I remember one day, though, I went breakfast, lunch, and dinner and saw Ray three times. And he was retired. You know, I mean, it was just... And, you know, I told that story up until the end, and Ray loved that story because he loved to be busy and he was passionate about this city. And so I know we said goodbye to him yesterday, but I thought it pertinent to say one final round of thank yous on this horseshoe to Ray Ackerman and his family, and that we will miss him. City manager reports.
Good day, sir.
All right. Citizens to be heard. Roy, come on up. Roy, we will need your name and address for the record.
Roy Stafford, 3901 South Portland Avenue, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. My purpose in being here this morning is I attended a funeral this weekend, Erlene Tipton. Erlene Tipton was the wife of ex-Ward 7 councilperson Ben Tipton. Ben Tipton was a lifelong family friend. Has a lot to do with my understanding of how things work. And while I was at the funeral, something came over me to come and apologize to Ms. Sawyer, Ms. Kersey, for the uncomfort that I may have caused you to feel the last time I spoke before the council, because it was unprofessional of me, and I apologize. Protecting women is what I was raised to do. I kept my mom at home after graduating high school until she passed. I've been with the same significant other for 28 years. And I know I've told you the story before of how I went to prison. And I invite anyone that wants to read the transcript of my pre-trial trial testimony, not by me, but by the police official. It's out there for the reading. I'm the only one that has a copy of it, though I'm the only one that ordered one. But the point of this is, anyone that knows me knows that if I tell you, 5:00 Friday, I'm going to physically hit you, 4:59, you know you need to duck because I'm going to keep my word. They know this about me, that if you and your husband are walking to a doorway, and your husband doesn't break to get that door, I'm going to run past him and embarrass him because that's the way I was raised. Females, that's what we're supposed to do. My wife, while I was going to prison, was a victim of a serial rapist that was raping black girls in 1990. And there was a total count of 14 females that were raped by this guy before the Oklahoma City Police Department made the public aware. So I have a lot of things that I'm dealing with. That day, the bruise on my hand, that was the least. That was the least of it. Right at the same time, a child 17 years old was shot in my doorway in the back with a 40 caliber handgun. Two weeks prior to that, I spent 3 hours and 45 minutes contacting 911 to get a police officer to respond to my address because of the gang situation that was going on outside my apartment where my wife and I were.